Good evening, welcome to the February 1st regular meeting of the Rockville Center Board of Education. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the republic which stands before the House of Representatives, and to the citizens of this country. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies. It is the foundation of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies. The Constitution is the foundation of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies, the heart and soul of our bodies, the lifeblood of our bodies.
also help support these incredible dedicated coordinators for our community ed and our summer programs. They do a wonderful job putting together these programs. I am very, very proud of them. In a moment, they're going to get to come up here and speak to their programs a little bit. They're going to elaborate on the incredible activities that they plan out for their students. You'll see, you know, these students, it ranges all the way from our incoming kindergarten students all the way through to our high school-level students. They put so much hard work in preparation into these programs. I want to thank them for that. Our students benefit greatly from these unique opportunities that we provide for them here in our school district. At this time, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Nicole Gigante, who is our Project Great Coordinator. Project Great is the program that provides both before-school and after-school supervision for our students. Thank you, Ms. Gigante.
Good evening, Superintendent Gavin, Board of Education, community members and colleagues. My name is Nicole Gigante, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here with you tonight to present on the Project Great program. This program is very dear to me as I have served as director for the past four years. I was also a coordinator at Project Great at Wilson for ten years. I currently oversee the before and after-school programs for all five elementary schools. Our numbers during the 2022-2023 school year at Project Great increased and now far exceed our pre-COVID numbers. We offer a safe and nurturing environment for children to grow, to learn, and to socialize with their peers. We are lucky to run under the leadership of Christopher Zapia, who oversees the Project Great program, and I'd like to thank him for his guidance and support. Behind the scenes, we have the amazing Amy Abbey, our community ed secretary, who keeps Project Great running flawlessly with her hard work and dedication to our families. I would like to recognize her for all of her efforts daily. Tonight, as I get the chance to present on an overview of the 2022-2023 school year, I'd like to first talk about ELEO. ELEO is our online registration and billing system. It's so important to our Project Great families because they can register their children, select dates and times, and also add last-minute drop-ins. The system saves information from one child to the next, making it easy to access enrollment into our other community ed programs such as Pre-K Camp or ACE. We offer family discounts for multiple children enrolled in Project Great, and parents can also access their accounts from their monthly billing statements right on the app. Our coordinators at all five sites have the same information quickly accessible, emergency contacts, allergies, and other important information. The use of ELEO makes parent and teacher access flexible and easy. Our morning Project Great program starts at 7:00 a.m. and runs through the start of the school day at 8:50 a.m. Children are offered a healthy breakfast, which includes yogurt, cereal, fresh fruit, breakfast bars, and cheese sticks. Our morning program also offers time for children to have access to the outside-school playgrounds and play organized games with their peers under teacher supervision. Our after-school program runs in two sessions, which works out nicely for working families. There is a 3:30 to 5:00 p.m., and there is a second session from 3:30 to 6:30. Children finish homework while eating a healthy snack. They are given teacher support or assisted with a high school volunteer to complete work. Healthy snacks in the afternoon include graham crackers, pretzels, goldfish, cheese sticks, and fresh fruit. The afternoon also allows for more playtime on the playgrounds. We use outside playgrounds at all five sites as long as the weather is nice. The children play organized games with supervision, arts and crafts, and have access to our libraries for reading time. Our high school and middle school volunteers love to come to Project Great. They can use these hours towards their community service within the community. Many former Project Great students enjoy coming back to where they were once a student at Project Great themselves. The little ones adore doing homework with the older children. They love playing with them and really look up to our big kids. This year, we also took on Take a Look at Teaching students into our program. These students from the high school are interested in becoming teachers. This gives them a hands-on experience as they volunteer. It's truly a win-win for everyone. As we look closely at last year's numbers, you will see the increased enrollment in all five schools. Total enrollment in 21-22 was at 223 students. This past year, from 2022 to 2023, it jumped to 294 total enrolled students. This year, we are seeing even higher numbers at all five sites. This is thanks to our loving staff. They support our students in fostering friendships, encourage them to use empathy, and, and understand the importance of cooperation. Our students at Project Great feel loved and safe. Project Great parents entrust their children to us with confidence, and we are happy to provide a sanctuary where their children can flourish and grow. Thank you for your time. I now want to hand it over to Christopher DiAmbrosio.
Thank you. You're always very difficult to follow. So my name is Christian DiAmbrosio. I'm the Director for Community Education, which is responsible for fall and spring adult education, winter ACE, and Regents Review. I'd like to thank the Board and Central Administration for their support. Without it, we wouldn't have these wonderful programs that bring members of the community together. So the first program that I'd like to talk about is ACE. The ACE program, children get to pick two one-hour enrichment classes that are held at the middle school for six Saturdays. The classes range from, we have coding classes, arts and crafts, we have cooking classes. And what I love about ACE, ACE is one of these programs that are, that is my favorite because kids from other buildings get to come together that they wouldn't normally meet and build friendships that could foster through middle school and high school. And it's a really wonderful program. And I'd like to thank Ms. McGinn for her support in allowing us to use the building, along with the custodial staff, Mark and John Marmo. Every morning, they have the lobby set up for us and make sure the rooms are ready for teachers on Monday. And let me tell you, these kids have fun, and these rooms show it. Custodians have their work cut out for them when ACE is over. Especially the painting classes, the projects that the kids come with, I'll show you some pictures of them. You could really tell that they have fun. So here are some of the categories. We have coding, we have science classes. We also have a business in the community called Drama Kids that comes in and offers theater classes for us. We have lots of art and cooking classes. We're offering a fitness class. We have reading classes, poetry writings. We have a large variety. And here are some of our kids having fun. On the left is a cooking class that we're holding in the faculty room. On the right, we have our painting classes. Here's our coding class. We're utilizing the computer room at the middle school. I think they were using Python. And we have a drawing class. And I'm looking at that picture of the face that the girl's drawing, unbelievable. Okay, the next program, Regents Review. Here you can see all the classes we offered. So two years ago, we offered Regents Review as a lottery. So we had set number of students that could enter a class, and we randomly picked them to fill them. Last year, we decided to run it differently, and we had open enrollment. So, and to anticipate the large enrollments, we tried to get as many classes as we can to cover all the kid, all the children's needs. One of the things that we had, we had the teachers do that were teaching the classes is generate a rubric or a syllabus showing what topics there would be, that they were covering each week, and post it online. So if a student, let's say, in living environment knew they needed help in cellular respiration, they could look on the schedule, see when that class was being taught, and note to go. Excuse me. So we were able to fund the program through COVID grant funding. Classes met two nights a week for two hours each. We had one directly after school and one in the evening at 6:00 p.m. For the classes after school, we utilized both the middle school and the high school. The middle school held earth science and math, and the high school was holding all the high school classes. Okay, adult education. The adult education is a great way for adults in our community to get away from their daily grind and take a class to learn something new and to be with other community members that share the same interests. Over the years, many of our classes have created small families of friends that sign up for the same classes to be with each other each semester, like cooking, mahjong, crocheting, tap, and painting with watercolors. Many of our adult students enjoy the classes so much, they ask to extend the classes through the winter. Our watercolor class is turning out to be a full-year class. They don't want it to end. Every time it ends, they ask us to renew it, and, and they run in our cooking class. It's like a little cult. They want to know when the, when it's going to be, and they want us to email them first so that they could register because it can only fit so many, so many people in the classroom. So we have great teachers, great classes, and it's a great way to get out of the house. All of these, oh, sorry. So here you can see our enrollment for adult education. So 2021, that was the COVID year, which we don't like to talk about. And then you can see the year after that, our enrollment was very low. And now, last year, it's, it's improved drastically, and this year, we're doing better than last. And here are some watercolor paintings from some of the adults. Here's our tap class. This is another one that people love. This class, we have a range of adults from twenty up to eighty taking the classes. And this is at Covert Elementary School. Okay, so all of these programs take a lot of planning and support from the Board and Central Administration, building principals, custodial staff. And the one person I haven't mentioned yet is Amy Abbey, the community ed secretary. The secretary is often the unsung hero of any organization. Amy works tirelessly behind the scenes to ensure everyone has what they need and that everything runs smoothly. She is a true asset to the department, and I'm grateful to have her. Now I'd like to pass it over to Keith.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Keith Eckert. I'm the summer program principal. Just going back to what Mr. Gavin said, not only am I one of the Stellar administrators that run these programs, but I also am a Stellar teacher at Riverside. I do want to thank Mr. Gavin, Ms. Love, Central Administration, the entire Board of Ed, the teachers and staff, and the entire community for continuing to support the summer program. I know everyone's already mentioned it so far, but I, I can't be up here a second longer without thanking Amy Abbey. Whether you've registered for Project Great or done anything through Winter ACE, Adult Ed, or Summer Program, you have absolutely at some point had a conversation with Amy Abbey. Without her, I don't think any of this would be possible in any of the programs you heard about tonight. We're going to start with our Pre-K program. Ms. Nino was our coordinator for that. She's unable to be here tonight. I do want to thank Mr. Zapia for helping with the transition over to Ms. Nino, as he was our former coordinator. Our Pre-K program, what we essentially do is we're preparing our kids for what they're going to encounter in kindergarten. There's a focus on learning routines. They participate in lots of ELA and math-themed centers and activities that emphasize social and emotional development as well as play. We had, sorry, we had 145 students across the district that participated in our Pre-K program. This is actually up from 133 last year. We've partnered with Ms. Love and the social workers and all the elementary buildings, excuse me, to create more outreach and try to increase our numbers moving forward. One of the great things about the Pre-K program is their thematic days. There's always some kind of fun event each week. Something from what I used to run Pre-K program, they still do, is Bubble Day, where the students create bubble potion, potion, excuse me. I know Mrs. Gigante was one of the, the founders of Bubble Day in Pre-K. And they're choosing household ingredients. Every kid gets to basically experiment with different types of wands and things like that to make bubbles. And of course, they get to bring home the recipe to try at home. We also have the South Hempstead Fire Department that comes and does a fire safety day. All the Pre-K students get to play on the fire truck. They get to see what a firefighter looks like. They get to talk about fire safety and keeping themselves safe. This year was our first year in Pre-K since COVID that we brought back an in-person visitors' day. We had to eliminate visitors' day many years ago during COVID, then we transitioned to a virtual visitors' day. And now this year, we were able to have an in-person virtual, excuse me, in-person visitors' day. So that gave our parents and families a chance to come in and, and see a little show that each class put on and kind of just get a little peek into what the day is like for our Pre-K students. Here's a nice little picture of Bubble Day. You can see the kids are having a ton of fun with the bubbles. Their Shark Week theme coincides very nicely with the summer. And then, of course, another favorite is the RVC library trip, where the students get to go. They see a little tour of the children's section of the library. They get to listen to or read aloud. The students are able to get their own library cards. And what we really love about it is the librarians help them pick out their first book. So as the students arrive, they not only get to see the library, see how great it is, but they get to come home with a book, which then in turn, for the parents, they have to bring the students back to return the book. And we hope that kind of continues that relationship. And of course, some more Pre-K summer fun. So moving on to our K-8 enrichment, I do have a lot of people to thank throughout, so I do apologize. I want to thank Mrs. Pryke and Mr. Doris over at Hewitt for their hospitality. Without Mr. Doris's help, it's very, very difficult to run the summer program out of Hewitt. So it is a lot of preparing, and I just want to thank you. Our middle school repeater course, we had thirteen students. And then our Regents Review and Southside High School repeater courses, we had fifty-four students. So all of our, and the same bad numbers as last year. So our costs remained the same for the enrichment program. It was $420 for in-district, $495 for out-of-district. And then our bridge program, our middle school repeater, and our Regents Review, of course, were no cost to families. Total teaching staff, again, was very similar to last year. We had fifty-one teachers. The previous year, we were at fifty-two. Our total classes was fifty-three. All across the board in the previous year was fifty-four. Same amount of Pre-K classes last year to this year. And then our Richmond classes, again, about the same, high school and middle school, pretty much the same. Our support staff, again, about the same as last year. We were able to, we were happy to know that we were able to increase the amount of student workers, primarily on the Pre-K level. All of our student workers essentially come from Southside High School. We made a small little change heading into last summer where our volunteers only come from Southside High School. We used to allow our eighth graders to volunteer, and then we found that we were taking positions away from ninth graders. So we changed it where our current ninth graders, or last year's current ninth graders, or our tenth graders now, excuse me, are allowed to apply to volunteer. And this was the first time since my tenure as summer program principal, we didn't turn away any high school workers. In the past, we would turn around, turn away more ninth graders for paid positions and bring in more eighth-grade volunteers. So we're very happy that we didn't have to send home any letters telling those workers that there was no position for them. And these are our courses. Our course catalog is designed every summer based on the enrollment from the previous summer in certain classes, as well as based on the results of a parent survey I send out every year. Parent feedback for this year wanted more, or going into last summer, excuse me, wanted more arts and crafts courses. We were very excited to bring back baking. Baking had been absent from the summer program since COVID years, so we brought that back. That is something that we're going to be repeating again this summer. We'll have some form of permission slip that parents will have to sign based on allergies and things of that nature. Also, for our brochure this year, we were a little late getting it out. Bosie's was a little backed up in their graphics department. So we're very happy this year that we're going to be producing the brochure in-house. Tara O'Shea from Covert is going to be using the Canva platform to create our own brochure in-house. So we're going to save some time in the development and be able to push it out. Working with the elementary principals, we're also going to have a one-page flyer with a QR code that accesses the brochure that will be backpacked to all students. And then this way, we'll be able to get everything in everybody's hand much sooner before all the other summer programs start to come out. And here are just a couple pictures of some of the classes. We have our Game On, which is a board game theme, exploring ecosystems where kids were allowed to go outside, search for different sorts of bugs and plants and things like that, and talk about what they were. Our RVC Fashionista is one of our arts and crafts-themed classes. Imagination Campus, again, students were watching different videos and were able to create their own designs based on that video. Jewelry Making, To-the-Stage Acting Class. Our Kindergarten was for our soon-to-be first grader, so it gave them a chance to review kindergarten activities and things of that nature to get ready for second grade. We had our Soccer, a nice outdoor class. We had Get Your Passion on, which is based on passion projects and Genius Hour, where kids were able to explore and research something that they were interested in and be able to create a final presentation on it. Our Let's Get Crafty, our RVC Coders, again, kicking in crafting, and a nice theme class there with Mr. Lamanna, who I definitely have to thank again because on our last slide here, alongside the Hands-on Art, we have our RVC Ninjas course. The students are on Balance Beam- The students are on balance beams, excuse me. And then we don't have a picture of it, but there was also some blocks that Mr. Lamanna was able to design, construct, and build for our summer program. So it was really neat to be able to, again, use the resources we have in district to create the supplies and create the materials we need to be successful. Moving on to our middle school remediation program, Ms. Alyssa Brenner couldn't be here tonight, but she was the coordinator of the middle school and high school programs. I want to thank her for all of her tireless, hard work. It is a big undertaking to plan the middle school and high school programs, so I do want to thank you, Ms. Brenner, for all your hard work. We were very excited. This was our first year in a couple of years that we had 100% passing rate for our middle school remediation program. Moving on to our high school Regents remediation, these were students that were not able to pass a class during the year and needed to retake the class for credit recovery. The numbers are up there. Again, buses, one thing with the remediation, I'm sorry, in the middle school program and the high school is busing was made available for all of the students, whether they were taking the 8:30 or the 10:00, 10:30, or the 11:00 class. There was a bus that made round-the-clock stops from Covert and Southside Middle School to Southside High School. So students, anybody as long as they could get to Covert or Southside Middle School was able to get transportation to the remediation programs. And then our high school Regents Review results are up here. One of the continuous battles we face with our Regents Review program, the remediation, is attendance and latenesses. We do have a nice multi-step approach to that. The first time there's an issue, there's a phone call and an email home to the parent to notify what the situation is. The following step, we would have the social worker, potentially guidance counselor, get involved in the conversation. If we make it to step three, that's when we have the parent come in for an in-person, or we set up a virtual meeting with him or her. And then the final step, a lot of the teachers were creating independent work, providing it through Google Classroom to give the students every opportunity to complete the work. Teachers were making themselves available outside of the summer program hours to go overwork with students. And then moving on, just for our 2024 summer program, because even though it is beginning of February, we have already been planning for 2024, our pre-K and K-8 enrichment will begin July 8th and end on August 8th. The pre-K flyers have been made available at all the kindergarten registrations. Ms. Nino has created a nice little slideshow that kind of highlights all the exciting things that the pre-K program does, so that's been playing at all of the registrations. We're continuing to, excuse me, continuing to work with Ms. Love and the social workers at all the elementary buildings to get the information out about our pre-K program. We recognize that there is a correlation between the location of certain families in the district and where the program is, and that there is a need for transportation. With the K-8 enrichment and with the pre-K, we are constantly battling the Malibu, the Rolling River, and the Coleman that are offering the full-day immersive experience with the potential for transportation. That's not what we do. We're a half-day, so we're only three hours. We are reaching out to the JCC and working with them with our UPK to get the flyers for our pre-K program in their hand, communicating with families how to register, why to register, and all of that good stuff. Our K-8 enrichment program is going to be moved to Southside Middle School this year. I know Mrs. Pryke is very excited by that. I don't know if Ms. McGinn is very excited by that, but if there are any fifth grade...
I think Mr. Doris is the most excited about that.
Mr. Doris is the most excited. We had to pinch him, I believe. But if you have any fifth-grade families out there that have not attended our summer program in a while, this is an absolute fantastic opportunity to get yourselves into Southside Middle School, get a lay of the land, get a comfort level for where classrooms are in the middle school. Our brochure is targeted to come out in early March. Our registration will begin April 15th. We're going to try to have registration ready to go before spring break, so everybody can get their summers planned. Some exciting new courses to look forward to this year is our computer-assisted design, 3D printing, and Makerspace. That's going to be run by Mr. Dan Lamanna. He's even more excited for it to be at the middle school because he will be in his laboratory, if you will, so he will have access to a lot more equipment and a lot more tools to make that a really neat class. We are also going to be looking at offering a Vex Robotics, where we can use some of those teachers from Stellar, from the elementary buildings, to have that experience in the Vex and be able to bring that into our summer program. We are also looking to offer an advanced coding class. That was something that parents were asking about at the end of last summer. So our coding teacher is going to be doing an intro to coding class as well as an advanced coding class. And also, thank you to the Ed Foundation, as I had Mr. Gavin mentioned before. I'm very excited to get my drones for Riverside, and we're going to be hoping to bring those to the summer program as well, so we'll be on the lookout for a drone class. And with the coding, I almost forgot, I know Mr. Gavin is very excited by this, we're also going to be looking at the idea of some form of a hackathon for the coding class at the end of the summer. And then finally, our high school worker applications. Those will be coming out sometime in mid-March. There'll be announcement at the high school, how to apply. You pick them up in Mrs. Abbey's office in room 1404. Those announcements of who will be hired will be in April. Like I said, this year, we were fortunate, we didn't turn away any of the high school applicants. I can't say that's the case every single year, but this is my first year doing it, where we did not have to reject any students. And then those letters will be mailed home, and then we're going to continue with our ninth graders as our volunteers in the summer program.
Thank you all for being here. You all serve such important roles in supporting so many of our students and our families and our community members, and we're always grateful to have you come report to us on your programs. I have a couple of questions before I turn it over to the board. So the applications in mid-March for the high school worker applications as for the summer program?
Correct.
And how is that communicated to the students in the high school?
So we do announcements. We do about a week of announcements before they can start picking up, and then a week after. And Mrs. Abbey has a little tabletop outside. We color coordinate where it's a paid application for 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. And then the volunteer application's a different color. They pick it up and they bring it to Mrs. Abbey.
And is the theme true for those that are interested in the homework helpers, the high school students that are interested for...
They usually run through the guidance office, and then they contact me directly and source them out to whichever building they live closest to.
So if a student, a high school student's interested, they should go to the counseling center?
Yes, to their counseling.
Okay, thank you. And I think this might be a question for you, Mr. Gavin, or Mr. Bartels, but the Regents Review classes, last year, they were funded by COVID grant funding. How do we plan, what's the plan for this year? Because I think the COVID grant funding is no longer in play.
Right. We have exhausted our COVID funding, but this is one of the things that we're very fortunate Mr. Bartels foresaw that, and we have it already budgeted for this year, so we don't plan on offering any courses for cost. So it's already budgeted.
Okay, thank you. And is the plan, as of now, to still offer two nights a week, the Regents Review classes, or we're not sure yet based on...
Yes, that's the plan right now.
I think that was helpful for a lot of students, just based on their schedules?
Yes.
With what's going on?
And it was nice to offer the one after school, doing it a little different.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I'm glad to hear that the in-person visitor day is back for summer pre-K. Such a wonderful program for incoming students. And like ACE, you're given the opportunity to meet students from other schools, and then sometimes they end up meeting those students back at Winter Ace a few years later, so it's always nice to have that opportunity. And I'm glad we're being proactive about communicating to our community, so thank you to Ms. O'Shea for working on that project, the Canva project, to get it out earlier. I think that's being reflective of your experience last year, so thank you for that. And thank you, as always, to Mr. Lamanna for his contributions to the program. I look forward to hearing about it and all the wonderful things that are to come. Questions or comments from the board?
Yes, thank you very much for all of the information from each of you. These programs, I think, are some of the things that make our community a really unique and wonderful place to raise a family, because as Ms. Giganti mentioned, the younger students love to see the older kids come in and help them with homework, but I actually think the older kids love going back to their elementary schools just as much to sort of see how they've changed, how, what it looks like from a different perspective. So thanks for all your work, and it's such a success story, right? You're talking about increasing enrollment across the board, and I wonder, I guess my question is, how are we doing on space? I mean, clearly, the summer program's okay, moving to a larger building, so you've got some additional offerings you can do there. How about Project Raid, Community Ed? Do we have enough space to run the program as you would like to?
Sometimes at Project Raid, you have to break off and use, especially at Hewitt, there's a large number of enrollment there. So it's been a little bit of a challenge, but we use the outside space. Some of our workers will go outside with the children, and then some of the children will stay in the gym. And then we sometimes use the library or the classrooms to do some other type of craft or activity, and then we switch and the other kids go outside, and we try to make it work until 5:00, because we don't have as high a enrollment from 5:00 to 6:30.
Okay, so the more congested time is still 5:00, and then the space frees up?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You asked about Winter Ace also. Sorry. So Winter Ace is also growing. We're at, this year, we're about 180 students. We're at the middle school, where I think we're using almost all of the rooms except for two or three. We're actually also in the rec room in the basement, so we're growing as well.
That's terrific. And you have quite a variety of pupils from, right, from the, across all programs, from four-year-olds to in their 80s at some school.
Thank you also. This is, I can only imagine how much work it is to plan it all and make it all run. Just a few, and I love that we've started adding the Winter Ace. I think that's like a great opportunity. I think you did say, like, kids can come together from different schools. Like, being from Riverside, I always, we're always sensitive to like not having opportunities, really, to like branch out, and I think having that during the year, especially for kids who maybe are not playing on like outside sports teams, it's a great way for kids to meet students from other buildings, so thank you for that. Just a couple, I think I probably know the answer to this, but I think for parents over the summer, it's a challenge, right? Because if you're working, if you're, you know, ACE is not, doesn't provide as much support as you might need, right, because it's a half-day, but the private camps that are full-day are really very expensive. Is there any way to consider adding a Project Raid? I don't know if this is for you or for you, but...
It's not for them.
...type, maybe by lottery or something? Like, I think there are families that might actually be able to take advantage or would be interested in taking advantage of that. I don't know if it's ever been discussed, or...
Well, I don't, I don't, there hasn't been a direct discussion about a Project Raid on top of the enrichment, the half-day enrichment program. It's certainly something we could look at to see what the demand is, and maybe even do a survey to see if we would be interested before we commit resources to it. So I wouldn't want to build an entire infrastructure, or at least knowing whether there's a demand. So that might be something that we could put with the flyer. We would also have to be able to staff it.
Right.
So before we even send it out, we would have to have conversations with people about staffing it. One of the benefits of having 50 teachers or whatever we have had during the summer is that they know there, that there's an end to it. And that's not, it's just a half-day. They come in, the kids do a great morning activity, and then there's a piece to go. So we can definitely take a look at that and do an investigation. I'd be happy to report back to the board about either it's a feasible thing or not a feasible thing.
I'd appreciate that, and I think I will say, kudos to all the teachers who spend their summers still teaching, even if it's a half-day. Like, having that break over the summer is something every teacher looks forward to, so for the teachers who are willing to sign up for ACE, like, special thank you to them. My next questions are about the Regents Review. Like, I'm just curious how you think it's working and if there's any tweaks that could be made or need to be made to make it like work better for students and/or for teachers.
Well, we, one thing we learned from this past year, we increased the time from an hour and a half to two hours, and the teachers felt that it was too, the two hours was too long for the students to sit in class for the remediation, and they felt that the hour and a half that we offered the year before was much more manageable for the kids. They had a better attention span and felt they got more out of the class for the hour and a half rather than the two hours.
And how are the students when they're showing up? Are they like engaged for the most part? Are they, I've heard some stories that it can be difficult to get them to stay focused, so...
Well, in the beginning, the, with the younger classes, it is, does become a little challenging with the eighth and ninth, the eighth and ninth graders, but once you get into the 10th and up, it's like a totally different program. But with the eighth and ninth, yeah, there was a little, some behavior problems in the beginning, made some phone calls. I worked with, we worked with Ms. McGinn and Dr. Walsh, and we made some phone calls, and then over the course of a couple of sessions, everything kind of smoothed out and worked great.
Great, thank you. A question about the pre-K program also. The, I noticed that the numbers for Riverside and Watson were pretty low compared to the other three buildings, so I mean, some of it might be geographic, but I'm just curious your thoughts on that, and if you think there's any way to maybe increase the number of kids that are coming from those buildings?
So it's always been a challenge with the pre-K program, just, as you said, Ms. Gruner, just the geographic location. It's a little challenging for many families and many parents for them to go to bring their child across town to the pre-K program. They're back home, and then it's almost they're going right back to pick up, so that's always been a challenge. When we look at the numbers, because the Riverside classes are obviously much smaller on a whole grade level in comparison to the other buildings, it is pretty, relatively proportionate to the class size in terms of the enrollment in the pre-K program. But we're hopeful with the new partnership with the JCC, that getting that flyer into more kids' hands, more families' hands, making those, having those conversations with families and making those phone calls, that we'll be able to get more families involved in the pre-K program.
Okay. Yeah, it would, it would just, I understand, I've driven that many times and felt like I got home just to turn around again, but it does just strike me that there, you know, if there's, maybe there's nothing to be done, but it's just something to maybe keep an eye on. And then I think that was it. So again, appreciate everyone's hard work to put it all together.
Thank you, everybody. It's good to see you guys. And just want to publicly also thank Amy Abbey. I know you all sing her praises. We thank her so much, too, for everything she's done, for all the families. What I love seeing on the trends of all the increased enrollment is just normalization, so those classes that Mr. Eckert offered, that you talked about, like baking and things that we're bringing back, Mr. Giganti, all the increase, it means parents are able to go back to work, get back to their, you know, jobs that maybe they had or where they were remote, now they're going back. So we're just, I agree with Dr. Downing, just to be able to support those families in making those pre-COVID transitions, again, makes us feel really good, so thank you all for your hard work on that. I guess I'll go down the line so that, you know, I don't bother all of you. My question's about Project Raid. Mrs. Giganti was about, I noticed that we have the split session in the evening. I was wondering if parents have inquired or asked about a split session in the morning? So it's 7:00 to 8:30. I know buildings are open and there's band and orchestra and things going on in elementary, but if somebody needed an 8:00 or an 8:15 drop-off, is it just 7:00 to 8:30, or is there any opportunity?
It is. We usually have our biggest time drop-off from 8:00 to 8:50.
Okay.
So a lot of people don't utilize that first hour, but we have that just one setup time. That's something that we could look into.
I was just curious, because I know it's the same price, so if we offered it in the evening, maybe with a different pricing, if that helps families?
Yeah.
And we could afford to do it, might be something to look for, you know, look for us to possibly do. We don't offer, now it said, like, they could do it daily, weekly, monthly. We used to do that 10-pack.
Yes.
We don't do it that way anymore. It's just a one-off. You could just go and sign up for it.
It works out better this way, and it saves people money for...
That's great. I think that's amazing, because sometimes people's schedules change, and the fact that they could utilize it without having a full commitment, I think, is amazing.
And Amy Abbey's great at taking a day. If they have a day and they want to move it to another day, we try to work with them so they don't lose the day.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you so much. For the pre-K, I was going to ask the same question as Mrs. Gruner about Watson and Riverside. I was just also wondering if we utilize the kindergarten screening and orientation in those buildings to also promote the program? Because I have to say, it's a great way for kids to meet other kids, and you guys run it really so well, I have to give a big plug to that program. It's great.
Yeah, so we do make the flyer available. So as I mentioned, the slideshow's running at kindergarten registration. The flyer's there, and then all the building principals and secretaries have copies available to them to pass out at the kindergarten orientation and at the screening times as well.
That's great. So I think the more kids that utilize it, the better transition they can make into their, you know, knowing some of the kids just helps, so thank you. And I think the UPK is a great feeder. Now that we have more of our kids going to preschool together, I think that that's a great transition. And my only other question for you was about the middle school. Just to come, some parents who have never been to the middle school, elementary school students, that's a very big building, and I know Hewitt is a large building, but it's kind of, you know, an el, still an elementary building. So just to ease people's fears about taking their little people to the middle school, can you talk a little bit about what the drop-off situation would be like or the valet? Just so that we can make people feel like we've got these little people and going to help them get in.
Yep. So once our registration closes down, which is kind of mid to late June, there's always an email that goes out to all the registered families from, that Amy Abbey sends out on my behalf, and that will explain what all the drop-off and pickup procedures look like. Not having anything etched in stone right now. I know I've talked to Mr. Duffy because he ran the summer program at Southside Middle School a few times. I've had a conversation with Mr. Gavin. We are looking to set up that valet right in front of the middle school in Burdiss, and then instead of students lining up outside, we're going to bring them right into the auditorium where they would line up with their class, and then those high school workers would kind of be doing the valet and the escorting into the auditorium. We know how much easier it is. I mean, my wife is dropping off my kids usually at the summer program, so I know she appreciates not having to get all four kids out of the car and walking them in. So we're definitely not looking to lose the valet service. And then in terms of just the, the middle school itself, personally, I think it's going to be a little easier for the younger students to navigate because it will be just a rectangle where we're not going to use the science wings because I feel like that's where some students will get lost. It's just going to be the first floor and potentially maybe half of the second floor, depending on how many classes we're going to be offering. And what's nice is where at Hewitt, you're either on one side of the building or the other, and if you're trying to get to the second floor, you might be on that wrong side of the building, second floor. Where at the middle school, they essentially, well, not that we're going to let kids continue doing laps around the school, but if you just keep walking in circles, you're eventually going to find your way.
You'll get there eventually.
Again, not that we're going to let kids just continue to roam the halls at the middle school. But again, I also think for
I think that works for the middle school students as well.
I love it.
For parents of the fourth and fifth, our current fourth and fifth graders, I really think this is just a fantastic opportunity to, to kind of ease that nervousness before they even transition to middle school students to just kind of know their way around it. And I think after, just like being a student at the summer program at Hewitt, after a day or two, you're going to know exactly where everything is. So there are no real concerns about the transition to the building, just except making sure all of our summer stuff gets from Hewitt over to the summer program.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a great idea too. And I think the middle school, even when we were talking about doing the field, we always talked, it's really a community building because at some point, all of our students come through it. Where Hewitt is obviously only for, zoned for that neighborhood, so I, I think it's great too. But I just want to calm the fears of the parents who've never been to the middle school. There, you know, it, it appears to be a large place and they're unfamiliar, so I appreciate all of what you said.
And we'll have a lot more space too.
To make them feel good about it. Thank you.
A lot more outdoor space on the fields and a lot more indoor space. So if it gets too hot or if it gets rainy, there's additional air-conditioned classrooms because obviously the middle school has more space than Hewitt.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And then my last question is for Mr. Di Ambrosio is about Regents Review. So I think it's great that we are offered it for free. I know that we have had attendance issues, and that was part of the conversation in the past of the only reason we might want to take a fee, even if it was a nominal fee, was to kind of secure people. So when I was looking at the background information about the attendance, I also want the teachers and the students that are attending to feel that it's all kind of worth their while. So I'm just, maybe it's a question for kind of both Central and for you, but just wondering if we've talked through any strategies so that we can increase the attendance and the classes at the same time offering them for, for free, because I do love that part.
So one of the things when you offer multiple choices, so we, what we've tried to do is expand the amount of timeframes that we've had, so right after school for those of you that might have red, blue or something like that afterwards, after practice for those of you that might be in the play or in, in teams, and we are finding that occasionally there is an attendance issue. So one of the things we've talked about, we, we want to make sure that we're communicating regularly about what the commitment is, and that'll be part of the information that goes home. Meaning like, we expect you to come to these classes. You're holding a seat for someone. We're trying to staff it appropriately. So if I don't need forty-seven sections of algebra, I want to make sure that I'm using my resources in the best way possible. So that's part of the communication that goes home. We're offering this. It's free, but we would, you know, respectfully request that you attend regularly. And then I think Chris's idea of putting all the topics up as a calendar will help at least parents that are trying to make an educated guess about, my daughter has gymnastics, but she also has, you know, field hockey practice or something like that outside of school, then that's what, that's what they would be able to make at least a choice that says, you know, my club team is here. I can make that choice because it's something that she really needs to do. But it is, it's, the more choice you get, sometimes you get some fragmentation with attendance. So I think, Chris, did I cover?
Yeah, I just wanted to add also that at Rockville Center, at the high school, there's also zero period, four days a week, where kids could get help, one-on-one help with, with teachers, and there's also homework helpers also after school where kids could get help. The math has the, the resource room where they could go for math during, anytime during the day. There's always a teacher in there to get extra help. So I think it's a wonderful district that has lots of support opportunities.
Yeah, I agree. And I, I think the more we educate the parents and the families to, to know what's available. But I do hope people will utilize it and, you know, just understand that teachers are, are doing this to help their students, so hopefully the attendance we can increase.
You know, I think it's part of communicating about that, that there's a spot here. We're trying to make sure that we're putting our resources where they matter and where people are wanting to choose, and we support them. So the most important thing for us is to offer people a plethora, and I think you've seen that, that we offer, this is not just a district that shuts down at three o'clock or shuts down in, at the end of June. We are all year long, three sixty-five, open all the time with a range of options from, I think as Chris said before, from four years old to eighty. So, you know, this is a, we are a community organization, and as a community organization, we support our members of our community and try to meet them where they are. So I think you see a lot of the effort that all of our programs have done, where to try to meet people where they are. And I think we're seeing some positive growth from that, kind of rebounding back from COVID. Do we have some work to do? Yes. Do, for our Regents Review classes, do we always have some work to do? Absolutely. Summer school Regents Review is never easy. You know, that's never easy. That, that is something that I really like the fact that Keith has been working on a number of different escalating steps on trying to engage the parents and students, that attendance here is, matters, but at the same time offers students the ability to complete some work independently so that they can potentially eventually sometime earn credit. So I think we're, we're being proactive in trying to engage parents. I know that Alyssa also did a wonderful job trying to reach out to people, and having someone with that guidance background and that counselor background has really been important for us. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, no, that's great. I appreciate it, and I want to make sure it's worth everybody's while and, you know, everybody gets the most out of it. So thank you so much. Mr. Zappi, I'm not going to leave you out. I just want to say thank you to you. Outside of running a wonderful building, you're now running all these programs too, and I just want to say thank you for all your hard work.
We thank you for all of your support. We thank Central Office for all of their support, the community, of course. Amy Abbey, of course, for all of her hard work.
She should come to a meeting so we could
She really should. She really should. And of course, these wonderful coordinators, they're a pleasure to work with. They're such professionals, and they always put students first, so I thank them for that, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. And honestly, one other thing, Mrs. Giganti, that you said that I just loved how you were talking about students who are thinking about taking on teaching as a profession and involving them. I, I just love that. It's, it goes to everything we talk about up here, which is just pathways and making sure we're tapping into people's talents and their interests, so thank you for that too. I just really, the, all of, everything you guys are doing, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you all for coming tonight. This was an excellent presentation, and I will just start by reiterating. I personally really appreciate Mrs. Abbey. She has many emails in her inbox from me and like flustered that I forgot to drop in day, and I really do have to say there's been a couple of times where like I don't need my Wednesday afternoon, and she's been so accommodating. Like, I was totally ready for the word no, and when I got a yes, I was like, oh, this is awesome. So like from a parent perspective, she really calms the anxiety, and like her emails are returned in a minute. So thank you, Ms. Abbey, for everything. I really love that we offer Project Grade. It's, I think it's great that our, our families have access to affordable childcare before and after school and consistent childcare. So you can kind of get up, get ready, and know that that's always going to be there for you. And I also recognize that not all districts offer that childcare in the way that we do, where it's at your homeschool, there's a comfort level, and that really takes a lot of stress off the kids and their families. LEO is also great. It's very user-friendly, so I've really appreciated that. It was a huge improvement. Thank you for everything we do with ACE. I'm, I'm really happy that we're able to offer such a diverse array of courses for our kids, that they're inclusive, and also that they're affordable. It's a great option for a lot of our families. I'm really happy to hear that Regents Review is going to continue to remain free of cost. Again, access to those services are so important. And I also really appreciate that our summer repeater programs are in-house. I know a lot of districts use regional sites, and I think that just adds a layer of stress to families and kids. So I appreciate that we have that here in-house for our kids who need it. Adult Ed also awesome. I've been thinking a lot lately about like what is the purpose of education, and I think there's a lot of ways you can answer that question, but one of them is definitely that it's there to help elevate our community. And I think the programs that we have, especially for adults, you can see that there's a real correlation to just supporting and improving like social, emotional health. And I'm wondering, from that course catalog, and I don't have it in front of me, and that's my fault. I probably should have looked at it. I'm wondering what kind of courses that we offer that can kind of bolster like academic or maybe employment options for some of our families who might need that? Maybe people who are entering the workforce who need help with resume writing or cover letter writing or interviewing skills, or people who have been out of the workforce and who want to re-enter, or potentially people who need a GED and how we're supporting our community members in that? Because I think that's really important.
In the past, we have offered courses like that, resume writing and job preparation, but we've always had to cancel them unfortunately, and then the teachers that were, because of low enrollment. And then the teachers that were offering that then stopped offering it to the, to me for adult ed. So, I mean, it's something that I could try to reach out, try to find some more people. See, our brochures get ma, physically mailed to every home of, for the residents of Rockville Center. And I'm a little disappointed in the postal, postal, post office. I went actually down there to complain because people are saying they don't get the brochure. People are saying they get five brochures in their mailbox, and, you know, we're paying all this money for the brochure, a beautiful brochure to be printed, to be mailed home, and they're not, people aren't getting them. And I don't know, you know, we don't, we only have emails for people that attend the district. We don't have emails for everyone to send it out. So if there's another way to get, get it out to the community, you know, we even tried having little brochures printed and dropping them off at local businesses so that people, like as a, you know, they could pick up, and that didn't really seem to help. We tried printing little flyers and same thing, I guess the, the little flyers, like little card stock with a little QR code on there, and I think that gets mixed up with the junk mail and gets tossed, and people don't really see it. So it's a struggle to try to get what our program is out to everybody at large.
Which, that makes sense. I mean, it's, it's hard to reach all of our families, but maybe even just still sitting like our community centers or library contracts that we have there who might be able to
I was thinking maybe we should produce like a little video commercial.
We've done that too. We've had it on the school channel.
Do something like that. Put it on the school channel, but also I'm thinking make, let it run in the library or let it run in some of the community centers. So at least there's something that we can do, so we can talk about maybe shooting like a forty-five second commercial or something like that offline, maybe having some of the kids in the TV studio work with us.
Right. And we have Naomi who drive, she delivers around the district. She drops off brochures at Mercy Hospital, at South Nassau, the Rockville Center Library, Lindbrook Library. So we're getting the brochures out there, but it's just, it's a tough thing. And I think a lot of it too is technology today with YouTube. A lot of people with the courses, you know, you go right on YouTube and, you know, do it from the comfort of your own home, but you miss it, you miss out on meeting people and socialization and networking, you know, and I would just, you know, if you have any ideas on how we could get that brochure out to more, look to
Do we ever put it on the railroad sign? Just that registration is open?
We've done that too.
The only other, the only other point I had was just about the pre-K program. Again, I'm really glad that we offer that program. I think it's so nice for the kids to get, be able to get into school before school officially starts, meet some friends, meet some trusted adults. To Mrs. Gruner's point, the, the numbers at Watson and Riverside are concerning because they're lower, and it makes me wonder, I mean, I'm sure there's a variety of reasons why they're lower, but transportation is always something that I have in the back of my head is do our families have access to transportation to get to Covert? And I know that it's tricky with young kids and a bus that we would not per se be able to offer that. But I wonder, because Covert does run up Hempstead Avenue, there's the Nassau County Bus Line that runs up Hempstead Avenue. I wonder if Nassau County offers like a student card? I know like in the city, students can get MTA subway cards for free. I wonder if maybe they'd be willing to give us like a six-week card for a child and a caregiver if they had interest in coming to that program, if they could use, because that's really easy. It drops right by Covert. There's a bus stop. So just something to think about.
We could check in with that. That's something we could follow up with.
Transportation is an issue, trying to help our families be able to get there, because that's a great program. Those are all my questions. Thank you so much for your time and your effort. I really appreciate it.
I have, I have one extra question. Sorry. With the Regents Review classes, so the kids sign up ahead of time for the whole, like, course, right? And it's capped if there's, it's capped at a certain number of students or no?
Well, with the, with the, we've, we did have it capped, but then like it's the younger grades where we, like, for instance, Algebra I, we had seventy-three students enrolled, Algebra II, fifty-five. We had Living Earth Science, sixty-seven, and one cla, Earth Science, fifty-four. So we have large numbers. Another Geometry, seventy students. So we did have it in a classroom at the middle school. We had, like the first day, we had like forty, fifty kids show up, but then Ms. McGinn got the cafeteria, so we were able to move the students over to the cafeteria to compensate for the room, and then it was a lot of kids for one teacher, so then we hired some teaching assistants to come in and assist the teachers with those classes. But then as time went on, the, the number of students dropped.
Dropped off.
Dropped off. So it's really, it was really like the first, I would say, three sessions that had the bulk, and then it just kind of dropped off.
There's like a surge initially with the first.
And did you have a waitlist?
No, we did not turn anyone away.
That was my question. Okay.
That's what I want to clarify.
Okay. That, that was all it was. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate it. Feel free.
Have a good evening.
Go YK.
Have a wonderful night. Thank you.
Thank you. Turning to items for discussion, policies. We have one policy at stage one this evening. Seventy-three fifty, timeout, physical restraint, corporal punishment.
So this is due to change revisions in the law, so this incorporates a lot of definitions that are in the law and some revisions. It, so, you know, so there's not really a lot of flexibility with this policy about, you know, with revisions because it is dictated by law.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
So we have an existing policy, seventy-three fifty, that would essentially be struck.
Yes, be struck, and that's why everything is struck, and then we have the new policy. The one thing that I, I wanted to point out, because I think if you recalled when we talked about this policy last time, one of the things that we were kind of talking about is, you know, the policy was very special ed-centric, and there was some discussions of no one should have corporate punishment. That is actually one of, so we did tweak some of the language to make it more broad. That is one of the changes, that it was, well, this shouldn't just be a special ed thing. This should be a every child thing. So kudos for being ahead of the curve.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Good to move this?
Yes.
Opportunity for superintendent, Mr. Gavin?
Thank you, Madam President. Last year, one of our board goals was to examine K-12 techno, our K-12 Technology Continuum in terms of the courses, curricular and extracurricular activities that we had. And I just wanted to follow up with the board that even though we took that off as a goal, we still continue to make that progress this year in trying to contribute to providing positive experiences for students. This year, we held our first elementary intra-district hackathon. Thank you to Mr. Duffy and Wilson for hosting it. Each elementary school sent a team of coding hackers to complete a series of coding challenges. Students were allowed to submit coding solutions, which were judged by advanced commun, excuse me, advanced computer programmers that work with our partner, Kid Oio. Our students did a great job, not only coding, but determining the actual strategy of the game. So if you're familiar with the game Risk, you have to acquire territories over time. And the hackathon also allows you to acquire territories, territories through this time. So the students had about two hours to go through all the different coding challenges. And for example, if Wilson took it, took a territory, people from Covert were allowed to try to submit a better challenge to take that territory back. So we had a lot of high drama and excitement, and I really want to thank all of our elementary hackathon mentors for taking a risk and trying something new. So our stellar teachers did a tremendous job. I think it really worked out well for our students. I think it really worked out well for our students. I'm excited to see what our students do with more practice. Look for next year, our hackathon club to expand to the middle school next year, because we already have some dedicated hackers. Uh, so that will happen next year. Um, we're super excited about that. And we plan on inviting all of our students that were participated to an upcoming meeting, to the point. Um, that's number one. Number two, another one of our goals this year is strategic communication. This year, we added several opportunities for parents to engage with our faculty and staff. To include parents as partners in education and help them, help inform collective decisions. It started this year with the addition of parent-teacher conferences at the secondary level, which we debuted in the fall. We will continue again this spring. Uh, these are perfect opportunities for parents to ask teachers questions about curriculum, their, their students' academic strengths and weaknesses, and ways to brainstorm ideas for improvement. We also just recently held our first guidance meetings with our 10th grade parents during midterm week, which was the perfect time for students and parents to collaborate with our staff to align the course options as they go into that very important junior year. We held over a hundred and fifty-seven meetings of these guidance meetings during midterm week. And we have more scheduled for those that couldn't make it during that particular week. We've allowed parents to have the opportunity to schedule different meetings during, either outside of the school day or during different school days. We're super excited about that. And I want to thank all of our parents and our guidance counselors, particularly Ms. Ramsey, for really working hard to try to get something new off the, off the, off the, um, just get something new started. And, uh, get that piece out there. Um, in terms of budget, we are in the throes of our budget season. I want to thank Mr. Bartels for all his work to prepare us well for this budget season and beyond. As I mentioned last week, the governor's proposals calls for the removal of the safe or hold harmless provision in the governor's budget. That provision, I think it's important for people to understand, allows districts to budget with a level of expectation about what their state aid would be from year to year. So it makes it less random and less haphazard about the amount of revenue each district would get from state budget. So while it is not a done deal that it's happened, it's the governor's proposed budget. The next step would be the legislature would propose their budget. Um, and then there would be some reconciliation process. So we are hopeful that, uh, the, our legislators will take into account. Um, I've already spoken to one of our legislators as well to try to make this a priority. Um, for his participation in negotiations for the budget. Um, and I know that, I was just at the Long Island Superintendent's meeting yesterday. And this is a major topic of concern, not just here in Rockville Center, where it has some impact, but in other districts, it has tremendous impact. So we have a neighbor to the south that could lose up to four million dollars on the, the governor's proposed budget. It is very difficult, and I would say darn near impossible, to try to budget each year with the possibility of a loss of up to four million dollars in, on the expense side or the revenue side of the budget. But I can tell you that, um, Mr. Bartels has prepared us diligently and we are in great financial shape and we continue to be in great financial shape. Um, and we have prepared ourselves for, you know, the contingency of the governor's budget. Or anything on the upside would be great. So I just, you know, want to get it out there to the public to make sure that the public understands that the safe, the, the safe harmless, uh, component is really an important piece for school districts.
Thank you. Opportunity for board members, Mrs. Messier?
Again, I'd like to thank Mr. Zappia, Mrs. Gigante, Mrs., Mr. D'Ambrosio and Mr. Eckert and their respective teams for their presentation tonight. So happy that we're able to offer these programs, not only to our students, but the larger Rockville Center and South Hennsted communities. Um, I'd also like to thank all of the staff, including our teaching staff, student workers and volunteers, administrative staff and custodial staff who make these programs possible. Like to thank the Ed Foundation for their generous gift. I'm looking forward to hearing about all the fun the kids will have with their drones, seeing the beautiful art that will surely be produced and hearing about the positive impact the sensory room will have for our core students. Um, I'd like to congratulate, congratulate our elementary coders for their participation in Rockville Center's first hackathon. I saw a bunch of pictures on social media and the students looked so engaged and enthusiastic. So thank you to the staff who made that event possible. Um, good luck to all of our athletes as they wrap up their regular seasons and begin their playoff runs. And best of luck to our musicians and their upcoming performances. Thank you.
Mrs. Hackett?
I will never get sick of hearing the hackathon. I wish I could have gone. I would have loved it. Um, but thank you, Mr. Duffy, and all of the elementary students. I'm so proud of you all and congratulations to the Wilson team for, uh, taking home the prize. That's very exciting. Um, also want to say thank you to the Rockville Center Ed Foundation, who are such partners of our district, just uh, unconditionally and wonderfully every year. So thank you to the Ed Foundation and we look forward to their event on April sixth. And I also would like to echo the, um, gratitude toward the counseling department at the high school. Um, not only are they making themselves so available and we've had so many meetings held, but just as a participant in one of them, I could say what I took away from it the most was not just the course planning and the thought process and, and the conversation, but was just the, um, really helping promote that self-advocacy. So the parents are invited, but I didn't feel I played a role and I appreciated that. And I think that that's really important, that we're our school district is supporting our students and becoming their own people. And the conversation was happening between guidance counselor and the student, and I just kind of was taking notes and thinking, oh, this is good for me to know and how, how it was formulating. And I, I just appreciated the approach to the meeting and I encourage all parents to take advantage of that. Um, but thank you so much to the counseling staff led by Mrs. Ramsey. She did a great job with that and all of the counselors are just fantastic. So there's been a lot of, um, a really a lot of counselor support that I've noticed. Um, especially this year. So I just really, it's not just those meetings. It's for all the grade levels and the college symposiums you're holding and everything else is very appreciated. So, um, just want to end on that note. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Gruner?
Um, I'll echo the thanks, uh, to our presenters tonight. I, it's always just great to hear all the things that are going on. Um, for our kids and our community and just to acknowledge all the work that goes in behind the scenes, I, I think is important. Um, also thanks to the Ed Foundation. Um, and I also want to say the guidance meetings are, I think maybe it's because I have not been through the process before, um, but I think it's just been a great addition. And I think a lot of parents feel the same. It, I think it, um, just gives a window, it builds a connection between the guidance counselor and the student in a way that now the student, I, for some reason, maybe like, I feel like guidance sometimes feels like this other entity that you don't really engage with for a lot of students. And so I think this makes a bridge that maybe students will then build upon also. Um, and I agree, it was very directed towards the student. And I, I very much appreciated that as well. Um, so I, thank you to everybody. Um, the hackathon was fantastic. So I, I did have a chance to go and I got there towards the end. And I was, first of all, just the atmosphere was amazing. They all had um, T-shirts for their team and they had balloons for their school color and just the setup, everything. Um, but really, the kids were so engaged. I mean, by the time I got there, they had been there for an hour and a half and they were still like heads down, on their laptops, talking to each other, sharing lap-, like it was just a great thing to witness. So thank you to everyone who made that happen. Um, and I think they'll, I think it sparked something in them that will continue. So that's great. Um, and then I also just wanted to say, uh, I was at the middle school the other night. We um, had gone to the PTA meeting to talk about capital improvements, but I stayed for the PTA meeting as well. And Ms. McGinn was talking about all of the, um, things they're doing to help bridge the eighth graders into the high school this year. And the guidance counselors have been down there, the teachers have gone down to talk about courses. Um, it's been, I mean, I even know my son has come home and talked about meeting these teachers and meeting his guidance counselor. So um, I just wanted to compliment everybody that's been involved in planning that as well. I think that's been a great addition. Um, good luck to everyone in the playoffs and the musicians and it'll be spring before we know it.
Thank you. Dr. Downing?
Thank you. Um, I, I love hearing more details about the hackathon. I think it's such a great opportunity for our students and for our staff. And I love that the theme is the game of risk, because that's what it boils down to, taking a risk, trying something new. We haven't done this before. Let's see how it works. And I'm, I'm glad to hear the, the great results. Um, the great results certainly are reflected in our presenters today, tonight. Thank you so much to our, our staff and our administrators who came, as well as those who couldn't. We miss you, Ms. Dinino and Ms. Brenner, and of course, Ms. Abbey. MVP. But these are really such important programs that serve our students, that serve our students and our families. And parents need to trust that they are well-run, they are organized, they are safe, they are educational, and they're financially responsible, right? We, we always have that in mind. And we are continuing these community partnerships. I love that the students go on field trips to the Rockville Center Library, that the fire department comes, that we, um, I, I, on that note, I'll, I'll move to the Ed Foundation, right? There's another community partnership that, that we all benefit from. And these are volunteers, time and again, who, who give their time and really enrich the experiences that we're able to offer here. So I, I do feel very lucky to, um, have these organizations partnering with us as a district. Um, I am looking forward to the Ed Foundation Gala, April sixth at Gatsby's. Can't say that enough. It'll really be a great night of honoring two really, uh, wonderful educators. And I'm looking forward to that. As well as the Booster Bash tomorrow night. Again, more volunteers who have made this community what it is. They work every day to make our, our district and our town better. Uh, to Mr. Gavin's point about, uh, state aid and the budget, um, process that we're going through. One of our most important oversight jobs as board members is to ensure this financial accountability to our taxpayers. We take this very seriously. And when we begin the school budget process, we are mindful of the tax impact. We need New York State to ensure they will fulfill their obligations in terms of state aid. So thank you to Mr. Bartels, Mr. Gavin, for working with our legislators and, and making progress on the budget front. And of course, that's going to be ongoing as we go through our meetings this spring. Wish everyone participating in red and blue, good luck. Now that we're proud of the work that you put in to keep this great tradition moving through. Um, and good luck to our winter athletes into the playoffs as well. I also want to, uh, thank Lauren Reed in our communications department. You might have seen in your email inbox just a couple of days ago, the, the latest version of your schools. And you can catch up on anything that we've talked about that you might have missed, the, the wonderful drama productions, the science research students participating at the national level, um, music festivals, all of our student performers, art projects, grant funding. I saw the Teddy Bear Clinic. So much going on. The sports championships. So don't miss it. If, if you, if you still have it in your inbox and you haven't looked through all of the wonderful art there, I, I really encourage you to, um, open it. It's a great way to stay informed. That's one of our communication goals this academic year, is to make sure that we are, um, showing what's going on in our buildings. And we have so much to be proud of. Um, so thank you.
Thank you.
To echo all of my fellow board members, um, and just to wrap it up, simply stated, there's a lot of positivity going on. And, um, we are grateful to all of you who work on this. All of the work that is being done from our stage to our fields, to our gym, our classrooms, our offices, community events. And I just want to simply say to all of our students and staff, thank you and keep up the great work.
Opportunity for visitors. The public is reminded to address questions or remarks to the board through its president. Is requested to refrain from making any direct references to students or staff members that could be considered critical of their performance or their character. Such references to individual students or staff members are inappropriate in a public forum and should instead be conducted in private conversation with appropriate members of the staff. The public is asked to state their name and address and please limit your time to three minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Could I have a motion to approve receipt of financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Could I have a motion to approve items for action A through F?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. The next meeting is February fifteenth and that is a public work session. Have a great evening.